All right. Here we go.
Thanks, Jason.
Good morning, everyone. We are here for the July 21, 2025 Guilford Board of Selectmen meeting. First Electman Matt Hoey is away today, so I will be here at the moment. First item. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under the God in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Charles. That's everyone. Before we get to public forum, we do have one item. I'd like to add to the agenda. We have a letter from Lieutenant Kirk Fazulo regarding the request to purchase two vehicles for the police department.
I'll move that into the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Any of the agenda all in favor?
Aye.
I guess we'll add that in. Add that in at their facilities. So call it like 6.5, just roughly. Okay. So, public forum. Anyone here or online who would like to speak to any item on the agenda, please limit your comments to three minutes. You online? All right. Thanks, everybody, for being here in person. So, nothing there. Next item is the approval of minutes to June 16, 2025. Minutes. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Any discussions, comments, corrections? Everybody good? Okay. All in favor of the minutes as prepared? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. May opposed? Nope. Thank you. Next item is the July 7, 2025. Regular meeting minutes. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Questions, comments, or corrections to those minutes? Okay, everybody. Quick, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks. So, next item are reports from our finance director, Mary Jane Valisi. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here today with preliminary numbers for June 30. Obviously, we are accepting invoices through the first week of August for anything that was cured in June. So, lots of things to work on before we bring you final ones then. But talk about revenues. At the moment, we are, we do have a surplus in our revenues of about just shy of $90,000. Remember, I've been saying we're going to cut that really close because we had that state grant. It's just at the bottom there under other departmental. That didn't come in, so we had that hurdle to overcome. The only line item I want to point out is the tax collector line item. It is showing 141,000 unspent.
You haven't super. I mean, when I click on it all, yeah, it did.
Are you on board or? Oh. There's a little arrow you don't have.
Oh, it's on board.
On board.
I made that same mistake this morning. That's our main.
You'll be glad when you get there.
Know we were doing that today.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry.
Yeah, I made that same mistake. On tax collection, I just, if you look at the detail, you'll see we have already met our obligation for our current taxes. We've had a number of refunds. We have over $400,000 worth of refunds. Many of those are stipulations through the courts for items that are finalizing from revow. So, in February alone, we had two cases, both about $75,000. So, we're refunding money now from, you know, from our revow year. So, it skews the, it skews the total number in that tax collector line. So, just wanted to, it looks like we didn't collect our taxes, but we did. But we've had refunds which bring that.
Are those likely to mostly run their course this year? Are we going to see? Are there any? How many are pending, if you know?
I don't know.
Okay.
But, well, I shouldn't say that. As far as I knew, all of our large pending ones had been resolved. So, the potential of having those come through, there might be some small ones that I'm not aware of. I really track the big ones.
The big impact feels like it's in this year, next year, that'll finish.
Right. It seems like they're finalizing in this year because that 400,000 refunds is large.
And that's something that we don't budget for at all.
We, we don't.
Into our collection rate.
Correct. We do. Right. So, we, we estimate what that number might be when we do our mill rate. But what happens is when it hits, and, you know, I calculate year over year, and then it hits now, you know, maybe I didn't record that for this particular year. You know what I mean? So.
So, when those individuals who were refunded originally paid their bill, that original payment is in last year.
Correct. Last year, the refund. Yep. Right, right. So, they've paid their bill so that they could be up to date, and then the court stipulates a refund. And obviously, that new, if that also triggers a lower assessment, we've already built that in, you know, to the current, so. It's, it's a lot, it's a lot of moving parts.
Do you know how many that represents?
Well, like I said, in February alone, there were two that were both $75,000. I went through the whole year. We averaged about $50,000 every month. We have refunds. You know, someone may overpay, or we get, we tend to get a lot on motor vehicles. I traded my car, you get a refund, get a new, you know.
Is the 75 the assessment or the actual tax?
That was the actual amount of the refund of taxes. So, I'm saying these are, right, those are for two large.
75 or two people?
Two and about 75, 70-ish, 70-plus. Stipulation from the court.
That almost seems like you were at the grand last.
It does. That's what I said. Once that stipulation is put in place, then we've already addressed that assessment moving forward. So, those went out in February. Our assessor would have known about that. It's already booked into, you know, the assessment. But it hits. The refund is just having to be hitting this year.
I understand.
It happened, I mean, it happens every revow when we do. This has just happened to be, you know, a larger amount that we typically see. So, that's all.
Good.
Okay. Any more questions on that? We'd have to get the assessor and the tax collector up here. Anyway, that's really all I wanted to mention on revenue unless you have any other questions. Again, we'll be coming next month with final yet un-audited numbers. Take that as a no. We're going to move on to expenditures. Same thing, preliminary numbers. You'll see, if you look at the encumbrance line, we have almost a million dollars left in encumbrances. My staff will be working with all the department heads over the next few weeks to remove those, you know, clear them up, do something with them. And that affects, you know, a lot of the numbers. Some of the departments that are over, information systems is over. That's a payroll issue. We'll be having a transfer from reserve from personnel for that, a small amount. Golf, we have the golf commission yet to still come in. Believe they're now on target to come to our next meeting to have that conversation regarding the T-Box, remember?
Yeah.
We did it. So, that's our fire department. Do, I have invited the fire chief to come to next month's Board of Fire, Board of Finance Committee, so that they can, the Board of Finance can talk to them about their final numbers. I can have them come here as well. Communications, same thing. Communications, it's over with. There's a payout that they get for vacation if they don't use it. And for some reason, we don't have that embedded in our budget. I think that's really a budgeting issue. But we'll be talking to the chief more about that as well. Public Works, at the moment, is only over $13,000, but you see they have $209,000 in purchase orders. So, we'll be working with Public Works to clear those out, and I'm sure that that will not be over by the end of the year. Employee benefits, we don't often see that going over, but we've had a couple of large retirement payouts this year, which will be pulling money from our reserve funds to cover. We have retirement sick leave in our reserve funds. We'll, so, we'll be covering that. And capital I've been speaking about, that again is funds that are budgeted in our committed funds in the fund balance that we'll be moving over to, to cover those. So, at the end of the year, I don't anticipate any of our budgets being overdrawn. Obviously, the Board of Ed has about $900,000 left in their budget. Last I knew, and I haven't talked to the business manager about this in a couple of weeks, last I knew, they were looking about $150,000 surplus at the end of the year. So, they have some expenses yet. But again, we have, you know, a couple more weeks of expenses to put forward. So.
If I could circle back to that retirement sick leave, as I remember, those remaining exposure for that, that's a dwindling number.
Correct. No one, yeah, we don't add to that list.
Right.
So.
So, people earn that.
It's a finite list. I believe Mitch shared that with us during the budget season. It's not something that we, you know.
So, we've accounted for it at this point.
Correct. And so, the money, the money is in the committed funds for that, yes. So, we just need to, to cover it.
Great. Okay.
Because we know, we know what our exposure is. When that exposure hits, we don't know. We guess, make assumptions. We're usually wrong. You know, but the money is there in the committed funds to cover those.
Right, right, right. Good.
Golf?
Yeah.
It must have been three meetings ago that we discussed their overage and asked them to come and talk to us about it. They're not able to.
Nope. So, that's why I said they're coming. So, they had planned to come, but we didn't get it on the agenda. I went on vacation, and while I was on vacation, the budget got, I mean, the agenda got posted, and I came back, and I said, Matt, I forgot to put them on the agenda. So, he asked them to wait. Matt wasn't going to be at this meeting. So, he wanted to be in part of that conversation. So, like I said, we're anticipating having them at the next meeting.
Okay.
So, those are the reasons why they.
It was us, not them.
It was us, not them. Yeah. They were, I spoke to the commission chair. Okay. Lots of, we've had lots of conversations, so they're more than willing to come. Yes. It was us, not them.
I think we wanted to make the point to them, but they can't just overspend their budget on something that's discretionary. They just, they can't do.
Correct, right. And they are, they are aware of the issue on the table.
All right.
So.
Good.
I believe the chair and Ted will be.
Anything else? Anything else on expenditures?
So, I'm sorry. So, how do you think we're going to end up?
I'm anticipating about a million, maybe a little over a million. You know, enough to cover our, you know, we try to keep our percentage of unfunded, unassigned fund balance about the same, so we'll cover that. This will not be a year that we have additional funding to move for other uses. We do have, I do have on the table a couple of requests to carry money over from last year to this year. Obviously, these are budgets that have the money in them that they haven't spent, so we'll have a few of those, but, but not many. All right?
Ready? Any questions on warrants? Anyone? Always like to hear, what's this? Yep, would like to hear about medical. How are we doing?
Favorite topic. Okay. So, I apologize. Each month, I kind of change, but I'm trying to capture everything I know about the medical fund, and I'm trying to make it transparent so that we all know what's going on. So, I give that same thing to Linda. I'm like, I know, sorry, I changed it again. So, if we start with the expenditures, if you remember, I had adjusted each month for the stock loss reimbursements. And it, it wasn't clear enough to me what, what was going on. So, I have a line item now for stock loss claim reimbursements. So, you can see, we've received $2.2 million back from the, the firm that, that does our catastrophic claims. That is a carryover from last year and part of this year. So, if you look at the bottom of my report, I still have a receivable of almost a million dollars for the last couple of months that we have not received that back. So, I'm showing that down below. But I'm trying to figure out how best to portray what I was trying to say. So, if you went back, you'd have the, have the information. Typically, I wouldn't show stop loss like that, but it's just been so skewed when things were coming in. It just, it wasn't clear enough for me if I needed to tell the story. So, I.
It's very helpful.
I changed it.
The reality is, we're paying bills essentially as received, whatever, or whether it was 30, 60 days. The insurance company makes this, they're analyzing that, making their payments maybe 90 days out of it.
Right. Because when we were using Anthem for everything.
Yeah.
Though, it was automatic. They knew that was catastrophic claims. It came out of here, this bucket instead of this bucket. Now, what happens is Anthem bills us 100% for all of it, and then this new stop loss company has to reimburse us. And it's, and it's, doesn't happen overnight because they have to first send to either RHR or Board of Ed HR the data. They have to fill out paperwork, making the request. The request has to go in, it has to be, you know, it takes a while for that process to go through. So, what was seamless, and we didn't even see what was going on behind the scenes before, now is right in front of us. Because we, we can see, because our claims look so much higher some months, but that's part of the, because we haven't gotten the reimbursement for the catastrophic claims. And you can see on catastrophic claims that we are 177% of catastrophic claims. That is a huge, huge number. We look for 70%. You know, 70% is like, okay, if we hit that, we know we've made a good decision. The amount is good. 177% means we have some of our members, some of our staff or family that have significant issues out there. That, that number does not represent a positive.
Right. Development.
Positive in dollars, not positive in, in our employees. Correct, correct. So, that, you know, if you remember the last couple of years, we were barely hitting 30%. And so, it, you know, this, this is just like, wow. It, it's great. That's what the insurance is for. But what that number also tells me is we're going to get a bump in that stop loss insurance because they're taking a huge hit this year.
Right.
You know, we saved a lot of money in stop loss a couple of years, and it worked well for them and for us. This year is not working for them, as you can see. You know, we, we, we gave them 1.3 million. They've paid out 2.5.
Right. Premium adjustment to follow.
That's what, that's what that number says to me.
Got it.
So, like I said, and then at the bottom, I do have where we expect to be at the end of the year. Cash-wise, cash in the bank. I only have, you know, two-thirds of a month left. But I do have that million-dollar receivable for stop loss, which puts us at about a month and a half. To be honest, I'm happy there's anything in there because, you know, a few months ago.
Well, the same impact of all those big claims.
Right.
Is eroding money.
Correct. You know, so, I'm happy to be going into the new year with a month and a half of accrued, of accrued years. You know, and again, we've put more money in our budget next year. We can only hope that we've done enough to, to cover where we are. And if not, you know, we've been speaking to the rating agencies. I've spoken a lot about medical because of, you know, the different, difference from last year. You know, I said, things we would look at are, you know, we do have a lot of committed funds. A vote of this board and the Board of Finance could take something out of coastal resilience and put it in the, you know, we. Luckily for Guilford, we have these other areas, if needed, that we could potentially use, use to cover. Hope, hope, we're hoping, hoping that the way we've budgeted in this, in this year will, will help that number. But we're going to have to watch this month by month like we've been doing this past year. Hopefully, we've been watching it go down and down. I'm hoping that we can take baby steps up or at least stay where we are.
Because, I mean, two months is the target, minimum target.
Well, three months is my, three months is my.
Happy spot.
Happy spot, right. Two, two months.
So, really, that, that final number should be closer to 3.5 million dollars.
Correct, yeah.
Which is not a luxury.
Right.
As we've witnessed this year, we burned through $4 million. It's, it's cautious.
That's what it's there for. That's exactly what it's there for.
To remember, right.
That's what it's there for.
Hopefully, if it builds up again, it's, people always look at it and say, what can we do with this? You have to hold on to it because this could happen.
As I've been saying at the Board of Finance, just like I say here, you know, thank God for that surplus this year. This is when we, when we really needed it. You know what I mean? You never know when the roof is going to blow off your house. Well, it blew off the medical fund this year.
I know it's impossible to predict, and I, but I'm thinking of the reset. And we've, we've had such terrible history this year, and we go into the reset. Most of those folks that are struggling, are they, it's impossible for you to predict, but are they?
Right. Are you talking to stop? The people in stop loss? Odds are, our numbers don't change from fiscal year to fiscal year. We might, someone might drop off. We almost always get someone to replace. And many of these are year after year after year. They're ongoing, they're ongoing long-term medical issues that, that, that we have. And even when we do our projections, we kind of look at that. We, we, I don't know any of the people, you know, but we do look at what the circumstances are, and we know, well, if it's this, that just doesn't go away at the end of a fiscal year. You know what I mean? So, we kind of gauge which ones we think are, that's how we come up with how much we bid out for our stop loss, you know. But our consultants always say, trend is, we drop one over here, we pick one up over here. This year, you know, we have seven more, as of the end of May, I didn't, as of the end of May, we had seven more over 150,000 than we did the prior full year. That's big. That's a lot. Big numbers.
Thanks. Anything else on medical?
Not enough.
Okay. So, anything standing out on capital?
Well, I, I did want to make a point on the capital. Even Darlene said, you know, you're giving these out earlier. We're not done with the year. But what I wanted to show, and if you go back to the capital reports afterwards, the very last column shows the fund balance. And that's just how much money we've taken in through bonding and grants minus how much we've spent. And you'll see, if I look at the school projects first, it's a $9 million deficit, meaning we've spent $9 million more than we've brought in. What I do with that number is I back out the purchase orders because that's not really money out the door. That's money anticipated to go out the door. So, on the Board of Ed side, on the school side, I take that 9,000, I add back in all of the encumbered numbers, I come up with 7.9 million. So, that one's really over at the moment, 7.9. Keep that number. So, then on the town side, same thing. That has a negative, six million, six million negative. But I've got, oh, I've got that much or more in purchase orders. So, we got 6 million out the door. But when I add that back, I have a positive 560, you know, so we have not spent more than we've brought in. Only reason I bring that up is because this, this particular round, we have bonded $7 million. I think I told you that at a prior meeting, that I, instead of five, I was doing seven. And this, I just wanted to show you, this was why. This is why. So, we're at 7.9 million deficit on, on the school side. Almost the entire 7 million that we're bonding is school. Very, one very small road construction money on the town side. But just wanted to illustrate how we come up with what we need to bond. So, even though on the books, it looks like we're way over, but it's, it's counting all of those, those encumbrances, which, you know, I could have encumbered, we encumber for a fire truck. I could have that encumbrance on the books for two, three years by the time we get that. I don't bond for that until the money is actually out the door. So, I just wanted to explain that and to show why we give the 7 million. That make sense?
Yeah, the, the actual, when you say deficit, you're talking about money that's coming in from a bond.
Bonding or grants. Yes.
And then, so, the appropriation gets voted on, could be many years.
Right.
Until the actual bond hits the street, that money actually arrives here. All the activity associated with that fire truck, the perfect example, could take years.
Correct.
Happens before the money's actually arrived and our obligations start paying it back.
Correct. So, the town of Guilford pays for their, all of these projects ahead of time, and bonding reimburses us as opposed to bonding, some, you know, some municipalities, small municipalities, probably don't have money to, to buy a $3 million fire trunk. You know what I mean? They might have to bond, get the money upfront in order to pay that obligation. We do it in arrears, which is why we all, you know, these minuses, minuses looking at, but.
That's a super helpful clarification.
Right. But I, but I don't reimburse us for encumbrances because the money has not gone out the door. If you look in our audit, you're going to see the big number. You know, you're going to, you're going to see the, the full number with the encumbrances. But we don't necessarily need the cash because we haven't spent it. So, I thought that was try, the best way to illustrate why we went from five to seven this year.
Great. Makes sense.
Okay.
Anybody? Any further questions for Mary Jane? Thank you. Dave? Castro? Public Works items?
Good morning. So, we have an overhead crane in our shop that we use. We use it to move equipment and stuff like that. It's rated for five tons. Well, the crane needs repair. Actually died. Failed. We had it inspected, failed, and they said, you know, need to get it repaired. So, to get it repaired, we got a, we actually, I brought it up to my commission, and on state contract, I got a price, and I actually went out and asked other vendors too. But the cheapest in this case was a state contract. It's $16,441.28. And that's for the crane to get repaired.
Now, this is different from the vehicle lifts. I seem to remember we had.
Right. That's different from the vehicle lifts.
Okay.
That's an actual crane, and it'll, it slides from bay to bay. It's on a, on a, it has casters, and it just goes back and forth. So, all the mechanics on that one side of the garage can use it. So.
Other questions?
What is the cost of the crane?
So, why don't we put up, can we add a motion to address this?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
What is the cost of the crane?
Well, this is replacing the unit itself. The, the, so, the crane is the giant I-beam in the wheels, but then the actual part that lifts, that needs to be replaced. To replace the crane itself, you're talking, I don't even want to guess. I mean, that's, yes, easily, six figures. So, this is just for the motor. And if any, this is something that when we fix it, we can move it.
If we move. That was the question. I was going to get to, thank you.
Yes, we can move it when we move.
This piece of equipment that we're buying now, obviously, the structural piece is much more.
Right. We can, we can move it.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Hearing nothing further. All in favor of this proposal to buy the crane off the state contract, $16,441.28?
Are we buying a crane or repairing a crane?
It's, it's repair.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were buying a crane. So, the repair.
Right.
Sorry. Thanks, Charles. Hi. All in favor? Hi. Any posts? No. All right. Next item.
The next item is our vehicle lifts that we have capital money for, for this fiscal year. We went out to, and we actually allocated $99,000 in capital for these two lifts. And the price that we got for them was $25,975. So, when they gave me. So when they gave me the quotes, when I came up with the capital numbers, they gave me the quote as forty-eight thousand, and they said, and I said, okay, so times two for the two, for the two lifts, and they said, yes. No, they, they did the numbers wrong. So through Guilford Napa. There you go. So I just saved you seventy thousand right there, right?
Got that.
So uh, so this is the actual price, and Guilford Napa uh will supply these for us. These are the vehicle lifts, these are portable ones, that the mechanics can roll around anywhere in any bay. So those are also movable.
Okay, good, thank you. Can I get a motion?
Some move, second.
Any further discussions or questions for Dave? On this? No? Okay, all in favor of the purchase of two mobile column lifts for a total of twenty-five, nine seventy-five? Say aye? Aye, any posts? Thank you, and did you give one more item, right?
I do, uh so we have a few vehicles that need to be um auctioned off and replaced. GU fifty-two, uh GU one eighteen, and I can't remember the, the, the plate number on the one for uh facilities. But uh all Johnny on the spot, uh GU sixty-five. All three vehicles need, need to be uh uh put to auction, they're no longer serviceable. So I reached out to uh the state of Connecticut, and I had three vehicles donated to us. You're talking around sixty thousand a vehicle for replace them. And uh so they have a five-year plan for their replacement of vehicles. So all these vehicles, the three vehicles I have to replace those three vehicles are twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen. I received a Ford F-150 pickup, which facilities can take today. And I received two uh Ford Explorers, which one will replace fifty-two, one will replace one eighteen. Yes, so they don't they don't advertise that they donate to municipalities. But, right, so I got us three vehicles.
Okay, that's, so right now, all you're asking us to do is authorize?
That's it.
Sale of the three, auction of the three units you've described, and you're just reporting on this other circumstance, the state that's largest.
Right, and we are. We're, they're already in the shop, we're already working on them.
All right, I mean, I sort of feel like we should add that as a, as a, that we're accepting these three things from the state?
I mean, they're donations, I don't.
All right, let's just approve, can I get a motion to approve the auction of the three existing vehicles? For somebody else, another words?
No, it's that vehicle list.
Yeah, we, that's, that's sort of an ongoing process. It seems to me the amount of change to this thing, we should almost get one every
We'll have our guys, when we finalize the audit, as, as we go through.
Feels like there's a, today, we're talking about. Two more from? Okay, so so we'll have it after the audit? Thanks. Okay, so with regard to auctioning these three vehicles, we have a motion, second, all in favor of authorizing the auction? Say aye? Aye, any posts? Good luck with that?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, what kind of life are we getting out of the ones that, how old are the ones that we're getting rid of?
Two thousand four, two thousand five, two thousand eight, I think. Oh, yeah.
Take a lot of, a lot of time on the street.
It's the rust. It's the rust that's killing the underframe. So this, this pickup, this, this one from facilities, that had a huge hole in the frame. You can't, you can't fix that, that asset. And the other one, uh fifty-two, same thing, it's starting to rust. Now, one eighteen, I was proactive, that's the next oldest vehicle in our fleet, and that's why I asked for the three vehicles.
Twenty years, she's getting money to work that guy. You start chasing him after a while, it gets crazy.
No, well, and it sounds like there's genuine safety issues, otherwise.
Yep, so, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, here to talk about the Latrop House. Two weeks ago, I was here to talk about painting, carpet cleaning, and electrical. After that meeting, we went out to revised our quote. And after we got the quotes in, I'd like to recommend that Brightlight Electrical Services be awarded the project for seventeen thousand, one hundred and twenty-five.
Can I get a motion on this proposal? Any questions for, Todd, have we used them before?
Um, I don't think we've used them before, but they are, they're a local company. Very responsive.
Okay, we've got a little due diligence on that. Okay, good, thanks. Any what I guess I did wanna say is that everybody had a chance to see the letter that came in from the historic district relative to this proposal. Right, you were coordinating with them all along, and it's a very thoughtful, informative letter explaining how this is all gonna work. Still needs approval, but it appears to be on process to get that addressed in an August meeting.
Correct.
Fair enough, okay.
It's like a very productive way of handling this.
Right.
Very productive, collaborating with the committee and with Ann and so. Everything's moving along very well.
Yep, I answer any questions or comments or?
Pretty straightforward. All right, I, we have a motion and second, all in favor? Any posts? Nope, bright light it is.
Thank you very much.
All right, we can have Chief Massey, good morning.
Morning.
Speaking of vehicles.
We are looking at doing our annual update to our fleet. Looking to purchase two twenty-twenty-five police interceptors, we're sticking with the hybrids. Uh they have worked for us great so far. And as we mentioned previously, we're looking to transition all of our vehicles to the hybrids. Uh all the interceptors. So we have a price from Chambers Ford to purchase two police interceptor utilities. They're slightly below state contract. So forty-six, four thirty-one each, total of ninety-two, E sixty-two for the two. And that's our request.
Can I get a motion to that fact? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Questions?
Over the year, I have always uh, on the cruisers, you, you couldn't really measure the time, because they sit there so many times, so often, just running with lights and stuff like that, you know? So it, it sounds like the hybrids are working that way. I mean, they're just running off the batteries instead of having the motors running all the time.
Correct, yeah, so we're looking uh so a model year twenty-twenty-two that has sixty thousand miles.
How many miles, sixty?
Sixty, seven thousand, seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-one engine hours. Our patrol vehicle thirteen, which is our supervising vehicle, which goes out every single shift, every day. It's a hundred and fifty thousand miles, and has uh fif, or five thousand hitches hours.
And what year is that one?
That is a twenty-twenty.
So, so that's because the, and the gasoline engine shuts down, the vehicle stays active as a result of the battery.
Yep, the hybrids. Essentially powered by the gas when the gas is running, and then it automatically shuts off when it's sufficient power to run on the electric, so.
That's a logic.
It's tremendous.
And how it lasts like that, then?
Yeah.
Gonna be interesting to see with the lifespan of, I mean, none of the explorers have a lifespan of over the big ones that we use.
The Crown Vicks.
Crown Vic, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions for on this purchase? Okay. We have a motion and a second, all in favor of the purchase of the two vehicles for ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, no opposed, and then there's fit out, yes?
Yes, correct, so we would like to uh use Soli Garage in West Haven. Uh we've been using them for about thirteen years now. They've been instrumental with us as far as updating cruisers for the rear trunk storage. Uh our decals on the sides, helping design those, and they have the, I've seen artwork. Agree with us as far as suggesting upgrades, et cetera, and has worked with us as far as the hybrids as well. Very responsive as well with, if we have issues with equipment in there, uh they drop everything, and have been very responsive to. So, it's a
What color are they? I know we got a couple in a silver one.
So we would, we had planned to transition everything to the silver.
Those are nice.
They're discontinued as of next year, they're discontinuing silver.
Oh, no.
Our best league.
Indeed, I, I thought they were something special.
We can, we can paint them, but uh.
Those are two came from the state police, right? Wasn't there a purchase, they were
They were. Yes, correct, state police had done a big purchase with McGovern, and then she moved town, then they decided they weren't gonna go with the hybrids, so.
Well.
Yeah, we were, we were advised uh next year, next model year, they're gonna just continue on silver.
And they're not replacing with any other color.
Not, not anything similar is what, it's my understanding. It's a darker array.
I've done the, I've been on the highway a lot lately, and I, I've noticed that a lot of them are just these new, different colors and solid colors, rather than the doors and the fenders being different.
Right. Yep.
Can I get a motion? Fit out these vehicles combined, total price forty thousand, five oh five thirty-two? Second, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles, you can stop in anytime. We're gonna be looking for ideas.
Probably all kinds of interesting studies.
I mean, you think, obviously, visualness or whatever proper word, safety critical. I think they were, they were great looking. Anyway, Janice, what do we have?
Okay, um our contract for sidewalk uh work needs to be renewed with your approval. Uh it was a three-year, it was a bid with three-year renewal uh options. So I submitted to you the third-year pricing, I believe it's like a two percent increase. And recommend that we continue with uh, you know, that bid and this increase in pricing going forward. Rolled into that is a request to be able to expend the sixty thousand dollars that we've had allocated for capital sidewalk improvements uh for this fiscal year. Looking at our list of, um you know, the ADA transition plan that was approved, I think a couple of years ago. We're still working on a lot of ramp improvements, particularly along the Whitfield Street corridor. Um and then we have some other complaints of trips and falls and other repairs that need to be done as well. So the sixty thousand will likely be able to be expended pretty quickly. As long as we can get all that work done this season, if not, we'll just carry it over to next year. And then the other item was the fact that um, you know, we had brought to you a, an improvement plan for the front of town hall, particularly regarding the sidewalk area, which was some major tripping hazards. Trees have been cut down, um we still need to, we're coordinating with Public Works to get the stumps removed. And then follow up with our contractor to do the sidewalk replacement. Looking at his bid pricing and what the work entails, including some of the work on the site and the driveway improvements as well, it comes to about thirty-five thousand dollars estimated cost, as well as feathering in to the bricks that are there, you know, they have to feather in. There's some areas where it kind of loops into the bricks, it's gonna be straight now, so um all that work comes to about thirty-five thousand dollars. That does not include planting the trees. You know, that's still to be done and, and funded. And then uh just wanna update you, I have reached out to John Cunningham, we're revising some of these phase two part of the project in terms of from the sidewalk to the building area, so, you know, none of that will be changed until it's brought to your attention for approval.
On your list of sidewalk repairs, I know there's a couple of sidewalks on either side, or particularly that side, the town hall that are particularly bad, do you happen to know in the list that those are? I know not necessarily simultaneously, but.
Right, um that would be facilities um to do that, so what, what I'm planning to do is the sidewalk along the front edge, along the street right away, but we are gonna tie into the sidewalk, cause there's some cracks and such up to the face of the building. And when I do that, I'm planning to replace the curbing. It's an integrated sidewalk and curb, concrete curb, that's all very deteriorated if you look at it. We're gonna replace the section we do up to the face of the building with granite curbing to match the rest of the improvements of the parking lot that were done years ago in the back. And then I would recommend, facilities would probably wanna do something to replace the remainder of that sidewalk and curbing. Along with uh future plans, I think they have some monies to pave the parking lot that they've been kind of holding off on. There's also been talk about renovations or, you know, some changes here in the building, so how that best gets coordinated will be up to facilities to handle that, that remaining part, work with them, but figuring we should go to the granite curbing, it holds up much better, you can see it's not holding up, the concrete's not really holding up in the driveway.
To that, to that point, there, there's, I guess it's granite. Is you come out of the parking lot and make a right turn, right through that tree, that curb is like crazy.
Yeah, that's concrete curb, that's coming out.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's a hazard, I, I've watched people hit it. So with that's coming out and um on both sides of the driveway, we're probably gonna be elevating the sidewalk a little bit through the driveway, cause if you notice, the sidewalk has to dip to go through the, you know, and that's it's the way it was done years ago, it was kind of always deference to the car as opposed to the, the people. So that kind of has flipped on its head, so we're looking at replacing that whole apron. We're probably gonna remove the concrete behind the sidewalk and just replace that with asphalt for now, until the whole, you know, rest of the parking lot gets done. So that we can adjust grades to make them more, you know, kind to the pedestrians and not so deferential to the cars.
Two um kind of from concrete.
Pillars, yeah, but those are, those were in the plan that was brought to you um behind the sidewalk.
Okay.
There's one granite one that's on the southern side of the driveway, that's closer, that looks like more like a hitching post. I think we're gonna leave that one there, I haven't really talked with John Cunningham, but it's, we can leave it there, you know? But the two um identical ones on either side of the entrance are gonna be moved to behind the sidewalk.
Yeah, so this, this came about after we started to look at the front and landscaping, and we wanted to spruce that up a little bit. And this whole tree.
Yeah, yeah, so I guess um, you know, I know Matt engaged John Cunningham to do a plan.
Yeah.
I became aware of it, and I'm like, well, we have problems with the sidewalk, a lot of complaints about that sidewalk. So we're just trying to implement everything together and coordinate together. I've reached out to John, and you know, we're looking at changes to the brick pavers, if they kind of clash with the building. There's also a lot of brick out there that do we need all that hardscape? We're looking at maybe adding some patches of lawn that might, you know, soften kind of the front of the building. But that plan is yet to, you know, kind of be decided on.
So that original plan may well possibly be.
From the back of the sidewalk to the building, yes, is being still worked on, and it hasn't received your approvals yet, so.
I don't remember how we budgeted this, I apologize.
I don't know either. I think Matt has some monies in the facilities account.
Well, originally, the, the initial, we're gonna spruce up with some plantings. But way back to that original, we're gonna spruce up with some plantings, that came out of ARPA. Because we were doing beautification around the green, and we had, um so um obviously, that plan um has, has changed, which we do have facility money set aside, um you know, that we can use that for. But the original plan that you might think, yeah, it, it was, I, it was like less than ten grand or something like that, you know, and we, and we used but we did use the ARPA money for that initial plan work that was, was done. Yeah, exactly, you know, and we kind of set aside about ten for the whole project, um but, so we've evolved since then.
To that point, I, I, I think I'm going to break this up into three things. Can I get a motion on the thirty-five thousand dollar? Uh, improvements for the sidewalk and driveway apron improvements and most of what we've talked about here. Can I get that motion? Thank you. Any further discussion just on that item? As Janice already laid it out, I mean, it sounds pretty clear and necessary. Okay, all in favor of approving that thirty-five thousand dollars? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Then if I can jump back to the two percent, the three-year on-call contract with Leyden, we've used them for many, many years. And this is laying out two percent per year?
Yeah, this is the third year, last year. Yeah, this is the last year of the three-year option to renew.
Okay, so you, you sort of negotiate a term with them and then every year we have to approve it?
Yes, uh, so the way the bid was put out was an option if they wanted to include in their bid, the option to renew annually for three years and what that would be. Um, and, uh, they opted to include that to, you know, keep the contract for more than one year. Uh, so it was a two percent increase. Um, and then we'll go, I have to go out to bid for next year.
So they, they need a bid for, to approve William Leyden construction, uh, for another year. To be the on-call contractor with a two percent increase over their, the existing contract. Yes, anyone?
Some would.
Thank you. Second, thank you. Any further discussion on that? Thanks again, Janice. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, and that, I don't want to lose our sixty thousand dollars in the middle. Uh, for the, uh, this is our annual allocation. This is in the capital, your capital budgeted item.
That's an already budgeted item. It does not require your approval. It just means my office has to move the money. There's no. You, you've, it's already been approved through the budget cycle. It's, Janice is just explaining what she's going to be doing.
Yeah, specifically come to you and let you know what we're planning to do. So.
And I don't know when this comment or question that I have falls onto your purview, Janice, but, um. I guess I don't follow local social, social media that much, but I guess when the trees came down, there was. Questions about why we're taking the trees down. And I think on our town website, did we say something about that initially or?
You want to know?
I, I, yeah, I.
Well, I just.
I think it happened when I was on vacation, so I didn't follow it closely.
Well, I just wondered if, if, um, and this isn't necessarily from you. It might be from the communications position in, in the. Uh, selectmen's office, but, um. I'm just saying, thinking that maybe we should do an update about it, you know, I mean, uh, uh, that obviously was not going to look like this and. You know, it, it's all going to be positive.
Yeah, there wasn't, there wasn't, uh, I think there was a, a press release put out that kind of spelled out what was going on. I don't think it was from Kevin Mickey and maybe town hall. Yeah, and it was about the fact that the trees were.
Yeah.
You know, lifting the sidewalks causing hazards and, and, um. You know, to augment their roots, what'd kill them. So, you know, the proactive approach was to remove them and then have a. There's a plan in place to, you know, uh, fix the infrastructure as well as planting trees.
Maybe just repost that if you feel that there's still.
Well, I, I don't know. I, I don't know that there is. It, I, I just wanted to ask. I mean, maybe reposting it will just get everybody all crazy again. I don't.
Those are certainly big, nice trees, but they were in a difficult location.
Yeah.
Adjacent to the sidewalk in the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and they, you know, they did lift that one, you know, area quite a bit. It was, and we looked at it and. Sometimes we will make an attempt to cut the roots of the tree to then lower the sidewalk, but the thought would, it would just kill them. And so. It's easier to take them out when, before you do the sidewalk work, quite frankly, you know, because then you're not going to have to worry about disrupting.
And there's a plan to get some new trees.
And there's a plan to put new trees in and, and then there's other phase two plan to, you know, do the rest of the front of town hall. So, yeah.
So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next thing we had was regarding the revaluation. Uh, Matt wanted to be part of that. Uh, can I get a motion table?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Question table. Okay, all in favor of tabling item eight, uh, regarding revaluation? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, we're going to schedule a town meeting on August nineteenth. For the purchase, I'm going to read this whole thing. Uh, discuss and take possible action for a town meeting, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. At the community center for the purchase of a twenty-four point eight four acre parcel on Tanner Marsh Road. Assessors map eighty-one lot twenty-one for Goss. For one million eight hundred thousand dollars. Also, the purchase of two point six three acres on Pine Grove Road. Assessor map eighty-one lots one thirty-eight, one thirty-nine from East River LLC for six hundred fifty thousand dollars. For a combined total purchase of two million four hundred fifty thousand dollars. Price to be offset by a one million five hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred dollar state grant. And I see Mr. McGowan is here. Uh, but first just.
Do you have a question?
Could, before you, if you could put up your volume, Kevin, Kevin's on, so he'd like to be part, but I can barely hear him.
Kevin's on and Scott Williams. We can barely hear Kevin.
Yes, if you can just.
Assuming this is the right item. Kevin?
Yep, I'm here. I'm kind of work going on the house here. It's probably noisy in the background here. And I could put a, um, I could put up, I can put up a map for you guys to, um, see as they, um. Explain, as Gary explains it from the room, um, without the background.
Kevin, before we go, let's just get a motion to get this on the, the schedule. I'll say, thank you. Go ahead.
Can I use that for a question? It seems to me it's come up before. Can we have two parcels and one town meeting?
It's actually one piece. It's, it's two owners on it. So it's shown as, um.
I mean, these are combined. I mean, they're adjacent.
All right. So you've thought that through.
It's just, yeah, Dirk had, Dirk owns one and his sister owns the, the rest of it. So this is a negotiation with the, with the family.
Mechanically, we're under control.
Yeah, all right. I want to give Kevin the chance. Gary, you can jump in there. Sure. Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, so we have a, Tracy, can you put the, me as a co-host?
I already did. Did you not get the?
Oh, great. No, I may, um, see what I can do here then.
You should be good.
No, that's just a great.
So we're. Looking at this piece of property here. It's, um.
Nothing's coming up yet on our, our screen.
Okay, what's your screen? Here it goes. Is it up there now?
Nope.
Draw it with your fingers.
All right. Now I should be able to see it, I believe.
Nope. I see. Is there anything you can?
Um, check your controller there.
Oh, geez. Share content.
Tracy's coming.
We just, we did see this at one point already.
You, you approve, the selectmen have done all they supposed to do before. All, all, all we have to do today is set a town meeting. But it, it's an opportunity to sort of tell people what's going on. There it is. There it is. I'm, I'm happy to do that.
You got it there now?
Yeah, we're on.
Yep, property is outlined in green here. Um, the, um, Dirk Goss piece kind of goes around here. Back down around here. This is twenty-four acres. Helene Gloss, which is the East River LLC group there, are. Two properties here on the southern section of the property. Um, the town and the state already own a conservation easement along the, um, the river here, which is seven acres. Um, that's why you see in the press le, release that went out of a twenty acres for the grant. Um, because it covers the additional land, um, that wasn't covered by the easement before. Um, so we're looking at like the purchase of this whole piece of property. Um, which is a total of two point four million dollars between the two owners there.
It, it, and we're essentially. Kevin, hold on. We're essentially buying the land under the easement. So, so we're going to have an easement on our own land, but the. The easement. Together with the states. Together with the state. That was the, whi, which they will have protection under our acquisition anyway. So I mean, is it. The easement came about because we bought all the land across the river and we didn't want. The land on this side being developed and diminishing and polluting the, the river. Kevin, I'll also just point out where the, the, um, um, the cemetery is.
Cemetery is this plot down in the corner over here.
Is that maintained? It's maintained by the Madison Historical Society. It's a small box. That's a small box. And I'm around all week. If you have any time, you call, I'll walk you over. Well, thank you. Okay, all right. Let, let me give you just a quick summary. I mean, you gave the numbers. We're paying two million four fifty. Uh, for this. The state is chipping in and I'm rounding slightly, a million six. The Madison Historical Society is providing a, uh, I think twenty-five hundred. Uh, they started at a thousand, but they've raised a little more, a little bit more money. They'll get access. They don't have good access to it. So they, they will get walking access through our property, um, to, to, to get to that. Um. Just by context, and, and, and this is an apples and oranges kind of thing, but in the state grant. Um, I divided the number of acres protected by the dollars and the average. Grant was sixty-three hundred dollars an acre. Our grant is eighty thousand dollars an acre. So they're giving us eighty thousand dollars per acre. Uh, in part because. And, and, and let me read what they wrote in their, uh, description. This is a habitat-rich parcel on the East River. Contains tidal river wetlands, inland wetlands, hayfield, mature upland, oak hick, hickory forest. It is located across from the town-owned six hundred and ten acre East River Preserve. And East River, Eastwood Preserve owned by the Land Trust and upstream from the Salt Meadow Audubon Sanctuary. And the state of Connecticut's East River Marsh Wildlife Management Area. Uh, protect numerous imperilled flora, fauna, and the health of the East River and the East River Marsh Complex as it reaches Long Island Sound. Uh. This is, this is an effort by Kevin and, uh, Sarah Williams, who wrote a terrific grant with some help from. Uh, Joel Helander. Uh, the property contains the Tanner pits. Which is what Tanner Marsh comes from. You can, you could see the, um, depressions, which were the Tanner pits. Uh, and it connects to the, um. Uh, smallpox cemetery, which came from the, uh, a group of local soldiers who came back from the French and Indian War. With smallpox and camped out there and all died and were buried there, which for reasons I don't understand. Is owed by the Madison Historical Society and maintained by that. Um, so, um. We're, we're talking about, um. Essentially a net of about eight hundred thousand dollars to us. Obviously the, it, this is expensive land because of its location, but, but the fact that it was engineered. Planned out for multiple houses. It's, it's very accessible to Tanner Marsh. So, I mean, it's not exactly. Um, you know, farmland, which, which hasn't been engineered. So the, the price was higher because of that, as was the East River Preserve when we bought it. So, um. That's where we are. Um, and we need to go to town meeting. I think we have a comment.
I just have a quick, quick question. Uh, Kevin, you, you brought up that, it looks like an email. And if you bring that up again, please. The grant amount is just a little different. It's.
It's.
On the email. It looked like it said one million five ninety-two five.
That's what, that's what the letter from the.
Oh, it, that's not what it says on the, the.
And then we have the letter from.
The town, the town meeting thing on, on your.
How did we, uh?
Oh, yeah, I'm missing that five hundred dollars.
I, I'm only seeing this. I don't, I, so that's why.
Right, the, the notice may, Tracy, we may need to sort of tweak this.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I can fix that. Not a problem.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I didn't see the notice.
I can fix the notice. It's, it hasn't been sent yet.
I hear good work notice we got.
I'm assuming we're going with the governor's letter. The five hundred thousand would be added.
That's my question.
The five hundred? Five hundred dollars. Five hundred, okay. I didn't see that. Yeah. Five ninety.
Just want to make sure what we're putting out on our.
Good catch.
Things is correct.
Good catch. Good catch.
Thank you. Anything else for Gary, Kevin, or MJ for that matter? Anybody else?
Um, is that eight hundred thousand still in the original land acquisition money or is that, is that tapping into the new, uh, money that we? It's how voted.
Uh, we have fully utilized the old bond, correct?
The old bond's gone. We're, we're already tapping into the new one that's.
Oh, we are tapping into it.
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
So that'll be a discussion we have, whether we. I, I just sent them where we are at the end of the year with a similar question.
Right.
Um, so we, um, we will, the purchase will come out of land acquisition at first, most likely. Um, and then when we do get ready to bond next year, we'll have these discussions on whether or not to replenish that. Is that fair, Gary?
I mean, as we know. Even when we get all our paperwork into the state, it takes a long time for the payment to, to be forthcoming. So. As I heard your earlier discussion. We are a town that's, that has a lot of cash, so we can. Cover our debts and, and figure out how to. Replenish. Ultimately replenish it later.
So we look at all the areas that we have funding for such things between grants and land acquisition and bonding and then. We just kind of determine the best way to go when we make those adjustments moving forward.
Yep. Okay, thank you. So we had a motion in a second, uh, to schedule the meeting. We're going to wait for, I'm going to need signatures before we leave. We're just going to make a quick adjustment to the notice. Uh. Any further questions? No. All in favor of the motion to schedule the meeting for August nineteenth at seven P M at the community center? Aye. Any opposed? Nope. All right. Thanks, everybody. Stick around. Make sure we get that squared away. Again, I would iterate. Great thanks to the, to, to the grant writers. This is. Yeah. This is, was a terrifically written grant, which was reflected in the comments that came through from the, from the state. Uh, including some volunteer work from, uh, uh, the Connecticut Experiment. Agricultural Experiment Station who took a crew and went through the land and figured out what. Assets were there, what, what flora and fauna existed. So it was, it was a real town effort. Considering there was a moment. Where grants from the state were in the last several years, it was still tougher to get through it. So. Congratulations and good work to everybody involved. Yep. Thanks. Okay, so the next one. Discuss and take possible action on the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Declaration of Independence signing. We have a proclamation for that effect. So I guess I'd like a motion to, uh, authorize the signing of that proclamation. Reading that way?
The proclamation is that we are going to fully engage in this whole celebration. Want everyone to participate. That's what we're, that's the gist of it.
I had.
That's the now there.
I had the, I had the, yeah, exactly. I had to highlight it on, on the electronic version. Good parts. I think you're exactly right. This is.
We're saying we're all in here on this thing. It's important and.
So it, it's really, in, in a sense, almost the last word. It's the board of selectmen, the encouragement citizens to create and participate in programs that will commemorate the history. Of our town, our state and our nation. And then we resolved to support those, uh. Various commissions. There's the America two fifty commission in Connecticut. Like, I'm not even going to say this. And the town. So we're supporting these various efforts to, uh, recognize the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the signing.
Right.
Want to read thus in favor?
Some would.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? This one only needs to be signed by Matt. If we approve it. Okay, nothing further. Uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, thank you. The next one, I wish I could have separated the sequencing.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
Thanks, Tracy. The next one we have, and you know what? We, we're, we're here another two hundred and fifty years from now. We got to pay attention to this. We have a proclamation regarding. The proper, proper septic use and, and routine care. Um, and whereas we have wastewater professionals of Guilford user's expertise and the design. Installation, maintenance and regulation of septic systems and the E U S E P A. Septic Smart Program. So again, another. Proclamation where we are encouraging, uh, and, and guiding the properly designed, proper design installation. Operation and maintenance of septic systems. Any, can I have a motion to that?
Some would.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of Smart Septic Week, which is apparently
September fifteen through nineteen.
Thank you.
And I hope there'll be some educational activities. I don't think people understand how important this is. It seems like, you know, the town is telling us what to do in our own backyard, literally, but it goes way beyond that. Environmentally, and as far as what the town needs to do in order to keep doing what we're doing and not have something forced on us that we might not want.
And we do know that, you know, we have septic issues in some of our commercial areas that we are addressing, so it is, it is the topic of conversation.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Okay, so, great, thank you for those thoughts and comments. It's absolutely true. So all in favor of this proclamation, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, that's another thing we all need to sign. Thank you. Okay, so brings us to appointments and resignations, with first is act on the resignation received from Bernie Lombardi from the Waste Transfer Station Advisory Committee. We're just accepting his resignation.
Except with regret.
Thank you.
And thanks.
Do I need a second?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of uh accepting that resignation with appreciation and regret, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Act on a resignation from Irina Estherlis from the Human Rights Commission?
Yeah, some, somehow, I think, it's the letter, I guess we reappointed her, but she really actually meant to resign.
Oh.
Because I, we just recently reappointed her, but her, her letter says, I'm confused by this. I emailed you a few weeks ago. They cannot serve, so. Anyway, she's resigned, so we'll, I will make a motion to accept with regret. Thanks.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of accepting that resignation with appreciation and regret, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and we have a recommendation to appoint Richard Decker to the Shelfish Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire February twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-nine.
Some. Second.
Discussion on Mr. Decker's appointment to the Shelfish Commission? No? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Act on the appointment of Dawn Jackson to the two-hundred-and-fiftieth Celebration Committee, speaking of which, I would like to make that motion. She, Dawn is currently the E D of, or C E O of uh the Madison Chamber.
Yeah.
And has always been very active in Guilford, she's a Guilford resident, very active here. So
And so she, she's the co-chair of the Madison Two Hundred Committee, too.
There we go.
Good.
And is that a second, Sue?
Second, yes, of course.
Any further comments on Dawn? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Uh act on a recommendation to reappoint Mark Russo to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire February twenty-eight. There's a typo on the page. It's February twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-nine.
Twenty-twenty-nine.
Tracy came in and corrected that. So um, can I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of Mr. Russo to the Zoning Board of Appeals? Do you think anybody's saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Act on the establishment of a co-collection task force and appoint members. Okay, somebody's gotta help me out here.
I could help.
Ah, thank you.
Um, we thought you were just here for the enjoyment of
No, so this is a new task force that um we're working with South Central Regional Council of Governments on exploring the ability to establish um co-collection in town. If you recall, we had a number of years ago done the pilot program through a grant from Connecticut Deep to do the co-collection of food scraps and trash, and then just be hand-separated. That kind of fell apart partway through the program because of a lack of sorting facility and some challenges with our haulers at the time. But there's still an interest from residents who, you know, don't necessarily use the transfer stations to dispose of their food scraps, you know? Um who would still like the option to be able to do food scrap um separation. And so this is, um since we're a, you know, a hauler, subscription town, we don't provide um trash pickup, we're looking at providing an option for our residents in some way, and that's to be determined. Uh to either have like a preferred hauler that we put out to bid, or something, you know, some, some formulation of, of a process where um it'll be available to our residents to utilize if they so choose. It would still be a pay program. Um we have um applied for a grant to help kick off this program if it is decided by this committee and this board to proceed with such an endeavor um to assist in kind of kicking off a program. Um and so um as part of the grant for the program with COGS funding, we already held um they called, a focus group meeting. So there was a, an outreach to the public, particularly the folks who did participate in the prior co-collection program, pilot program, uh and others, we put out, you know, notices and things like that to see how people be part of a focus group to really gauge the interest of the community in such a thing, which there was some definite positive feedback that there's an interest. So from that group, we sent out a uh request if anyone was interested in serving on this task force to further explore the options to, you know, to have a co-collection program in town. So um we had about, I think there were eight people responded. One ha- happens to be a resident of Madison. He was quite um, you know, he would have been a good, uh but we, you know, it's really just for, this particular program was, uh is just for Guilford right now, to use as possibly a model for other towns. Um we have an opportunity where this could be a successful program, where the last one wasn't as successful, because New Haven has a a, a plan and with grant monies to expand their facilities to be able to receive co-collected um food scraps and trash to be able to separate. So uh there's some infrastructure possibilities in the future that are already on the horizon that make a co-collection program more feasible in the future than our experience was in the past. So um so therefore, uh out of the eight, we, we chose the seven. I think you have the list in front of you of, of folks that um you know, were interested in serving on the task force from the focus groups. Um and um, you know, we would recommend we can create this task force so that us and the consultant Waste Zero who's working for SCROG can work with this focus group to kind of formulate a a path forward uh to presenting to you folks an idea for a co-collection program.
We often talk about regionalization. I mean, what is limiting this from? Being more of an individual town?
Um just because um each town is different. I mean, we're very similar to Madison. Madison, you know, we did, we each had separate grants last time for the co-collection program, although we kind of treated it together because we share a lot of the same haulers, although they have they typically have just one primary hauler here in town. We have about three or four haulers that work in our town. Um it's just, just so that, because we have our own procurement requirements, things like that, R F P requirements. Uh we're gonna do it as just Guilford, but it will be done in a way that it's a model that can be duplicated easily in a town like Madison or any other town across the state, quite frankly, that has a hauler you know, uh service type of
I think it would be good to encourage, you know, encourage other towns to join in to one program. I mean, that might be one of the reasons why the uh, the last program struggled, that there just wasn't enough volume. I don't know, but anyway, it sounds like you're on it.
Yep.
Possible. The other question I had was and I'm not a hundred percent up to speed on the facts, but what is the issue with commercial collection? You know, we struggled with why they weren't part of the last program.
Um commercial collection tends to be, you know, dumpsters and things like that. Um
But if we had a way to organize the restaurants and things.
Yeah, so the um, the Sustainable Guilford Task Force has indicated as one of their goals and projects is to reach out to the commercial uh entities in town, particularly restaurants or food, you know, handling to try and get them to buy into the food scrap collection option with their trash disposal. Um there is a law on the books now where if you, if you're a producer of, I don't know what the number is, but a certain amount of food scraps in a tonnage standpoint per year, you're required by state law to do food scrap separation and collection. Um it's also going to boards of eds now. They've included in the last go-around of law uh updates that um boards of education have to do food scrap collection if they meet a certain tonnage. Um so there's, there's, there are requirements to do that, but um the, the you know, we, there is outreach to those business entities to try and get them to consider it as well, and that could be something that's included in this co-collection task force consideration.
That just seems so logical to me, that, that, you know, probably much larger generator of food crap.
Yep, yep.
That and also the retailers of food that, you know, becomes a dating issue. I mean, that type of thing, so.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's a yes, so there's a lot of programs. Um many grocery stores may fall under that requirement to do food scrap collecting and maybe doing it. Yeah, and the task force can consider those uh options as well. Um doesn't need to be just focused on residential.
Okay, so did we get a motion to recommend the formation of the task force?
I'll see.
I, I just had, so Charles makes a couple of interesting points. Um what, in, in, in a broader sense, what will people's opportunities like be to, to provide information, questions, comments, direction? I mean, obviously, we get a chance by virtue of period and stuff. How will folks, I'm assuming you're gonna start by having some community input?
Yeah, I mean, that's to be determined. Yeah, it's gonna come out of the work of this task force, working with the consultants, working with COGS, really formulate how this is gonna play out, but certainly, public input is gonna be needed to know really what people want to see and what the concerns are of the community.
And, and it always strikes me that these types of things, there's a hope if not an expectation, that somehow that would not have any budgetary impact. People sort of imagine it's gonna somehow be self-sustaining or users paid by user fees. Unrealistic, in my estimation, but again, I guess that's the purpose of the that would be my first question to the scrupality. How do you propose to fund this long-term? And I'm not opposed to it by any means, but we gotta be realistic about how that's gonna happen.
Well, um, okay, so right now, solid waste management, you know, we have the transfer station, we have my time doing these things, but really um because we're a, you know, a pay-to-throw community, there really is no taxation covering this. There is a grant that we applied for, working with Waste Zero, who's the consultant for COGS and for this program, and, and was a consultant for the past program that we've identified, you know, I think it was in order of about two-hundred thousand dollars worth of funding to try and kick something like this off with, you know, public outreach, advertising, even potentially, you know, purchases of the necessary bags to offset the costs at the start for people. But ultimately, the long-term goal is that this would be a self-paid-for program by those who are, wanna opt into it, working with a, a hauler directly and not the town having to subsidize it or anything like that. But it's yet to be determined what the program is, so those are decisions that'll have to be made among the way. Um I could tell you, you know, the, the crisis we have at the state level has, you know, really upped the need for involvement by my, me and, and, and some of my staff.
Crisis, there's not sufficient places to dump
Right.
Trash.
Right, and so we've been expanding things. We've been doing grants. We've been trying to help and be on the forefront with the states, you know, trying to push these things to, to really reduce our trash. We've been very successful with what we've done at the transfer station. That, that has its own committed oversight, so we felt that this needed to be a separate group because it's an entirely different, you know, issue, which is, you know, hauler pickup of food scraps and co-collection of trash. So um you know, the intention here is not to go to, you know, town pickup of trash, you know, it's to kind of work within the the, you know, framework we already have established here in town for trash, but does that mean things won't change in the future? You know, no. You know, but that's not the intention right now. It's really to work within the framework.
Probably. Where is co-collection, Gary? What, what is that? I don't understand where that name
So co-collection in it is that uh is the idea where you kind of separate your trash into separate bags, but it all goes, is co-collected in one bin. And um, you know, it's, it's, that's kind of just what it is, so. Um and, but then someone has to physically sep-, it has to be physically separated at the point of disposal, so that the trash goes to the trash and the food scraps go where they need to go. Um there may be an option where it's not necessarily co-collected in the same bin, that maybe there's separate bins, you know, like we do with our single-stream recycling. We have a separate bin for that. That just means that there may be the need for an additional round of pickup to, you know, to achieve that. As you know, originally, we had two trucks coming to our houses, one to pick up the trash and then one to pick up recycling. Some, some haulers still do that. Now there's new trucks that have two, two bins in the back, so they're able to do the collection at the same time, although it's separate.
Don't we have a, do we have a two-bin truck?
No, we have a one-bin truck.
Oh.
So they do trash in one round, and then they do uh recycling in another round, but
This task force is is this task force going to look at recycling at all, other than food scraps versus?
Well, recycle, it, it's gonna be food scrap recycling.
So this is strictly the food scrap?
Yeah, this single stream is still a law of the state of Connecticut and still stands as a required, you know, separate collection.
I just look at this task force.
Yeah, this is really to focus on separation of food scraps from the waste stream. Because we're finding it to be very successful at the transfer station.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we're bringing in five, five to six thousand ton, you know, of food scraps a month.
Oh, my goodness.
That works, yeah.
It's a lot, you know, it's a lot. So I mean, it's, it's um, and it, it has a big impact on, you know, the waste stream, so we've reduced our trash significantly in between the food scrap collection and now the pay-as-you-throw program. So, and that's, and that's where co-collection also, it's not just food scrap collection. It also you typically utilizes specific bags and, and if the goal is to try and limit yourself to one or, you know, to two bags a week or whatever it is, and then it make, when you're using those bags, you think about putting your trash, your recycling items into recycling instead of the trash, because you're taking up volume. So that's where, you know, that role comes into play too. It's not just, you know. So those are all to be considered by this task force as to really how to approach this. You know, because it's having unending amounts of trash that you are kind of limiting yourself to, really doesn't you know, reach the purpose of truly reducing the amount of trash by making sure every recyclable goes to where it needs to go. And uh we've seen the single-stream recycling significantly increase at the transfer station because people are with the um, you know, base price bags. Yeah, yeah, that blue bag, you know, limits them, so they're, you know, being thoughtful, like you said, about what can I recycle and not put in this bag? So it's the food scraps and single stream that benefit from that.
We're, we're at like two to one, two bags of recycling for every bag of trash and separated food scraps already.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's the way it should be.
Well, fabulous. Well, thanks for worrying about all these things for us. Um, so we, yeah, so we need to make, we have
There's some sincere um uh interest and involvement from the folks who responded here, so it's very nice.
I could mention everybody, but they'll introduce themselves. I'd like to just vote on our motion to approve the uh task force.
And appoint the members.
And appoint these members that are listed in.
I think we should say their names, honestly.
I'm, I'm happy to do it. Do you want to do it?
Yeah.
Go ahead, you got it. Thank you.
Donna Grjowskis, Dana Rijet, Lisa Takoudis, Elisa Huzon, and Pamela Roach.
I have a different one. Jeff Lawn, K O U N, and Catherine Maltese.
Uh Jeff Lawn is not gonna be on the, oh yes, Jeff Lawn is there, and Catherine Maltese. There's gonna be seven, seven members.
And then there's somebody
And then there's, yeah, and that's the gentleman where, you know, we, I don't think we're gonna appoint, because he's not a, a citizen of
Sorry, I didn't see those.
Yeah.
No worries. Thanks for the idea. It's good to, good to recognize people.
Yeah, so there is a total of seven, yep.
So.
And there's room on the board, on the task force for eight. So if somebody, is that right?
Uh no, I think we're just keeping it to seven. It's always good to have an odd number.
Okay.
Those controversial votes.
Yeah.
What to do with the eggshells?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, uh, all right, so thank you for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
Thank you.
Janice? Don't have to sign anything. Okay, what do we have left? Town property. So act on, the first item is a request of Alec, Alex Inc., to use the grant on May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-nine. So act on, the first item is a request of Alec, Alex Inc. to use the green on May 16th, 2026 with a rain date of May 17th for the Guilford Pride event, which has happened a number of years in a row now.
I'd like to make the motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any questions, comments about this event? Which again, as I say, has happened, Sarah Salotto has put this forward. She's been very involved and has run this pretty smoothly. So all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nope. Okay. Next item is Vista Life Innovations. It looks like a bike event toward the shore and they just need sort of a weigh station, it sounds like, or landing spots. Doesn't look like any structures or anything. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion. A second.
And we're going to take a second to look through that. Says cyclists will travel out from and return to Park Street onto Boston. Course markers will be clearly mapped out. So the question is, are you going to need any police closing of roads? It doesn't say. And I guess I would, I would move to approve it and just make sure that there's a, that they check with the police. Make sure there's those traffic safety issues.
That's a good idea.
So, I mean, with that rider to this application, I'd like to move to approve it.
Second.
Okay, I guess it doesn't make any difference, but the person who is in charge of the event is from Madison?
Yeah.
So is it a Guilford, do we have to have a Guilford residence name attached somewhere?
It's the organization in Guilford, I wonder if I don't know.
First of all, let's see what this is, see if we can push this. The date of the event is October 5, 25. Why don't we take a table, because that is one of our ground rules. Thanks, Charles. Can I get a motion to table? I'll take that, Charles. A second? Okay, so just for that clarification of the Guilford involvement.
Yeah, attached someday, I mean, I assume that we.
Seems like a good event. There's plenty of time to get this squared away.
Yeah, without, what do they call that legally when you, without prejudice?
Without prejudice, without prejudice. Yeah, all right, so act on the motion to table. All in favor, say aye. And I'd like that answer about the police anyway, making sure they've checked with traffic. So both of those things, maybe we can make sure we get back to them.
Yeah, good.
So then there's the request from Guilford Day to use the green August 27, 2025, honoring World Overdice, excuse me, World Overdose Awareness Day.
What the plan they're actually doing?
Yeah, it says they're going to have cleanup of what though?
It's two hours in the middle of the day on a Wednesday.
Follow up letter?
They've done this before. I think they just have tables out for informational purposes and things like that.
It's not like a reenactment.
No.
Okay, thanks, Tracy. Any further discussion on that? Do you get a motion for that?
So moved.
Thanks, honey.
Where is this paid staff? Well, I mean, I support this thing. I didn't.
Well, it's Youth and Family Services. Dave's a part of Youth and Family Services, so that's probably why it says paid staff.
Yeah, turned themselves into some kind of marketing tool or.
No, no, no. Okay, that's again helpful, Tracy. Thank you. So do they get a second? Is that a second, Charles?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that one? No? Oh, good. All right, all in favor of Guilford Day, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, using the green on that day, August 27. Okay, that brings us to the end of those items. Do we have any committee reports? Who's working out there? Sandy, you always seem to have something?
Yes, but I don't. I was not present at the most recent Affordable Housing Commission meeting, but I will have some report for all of this, I promise.
Okay, wonderful.
A report.
What else happening? Anybody got anything? No? Any correspondence of note? Anyone? And then I guess we'll just, we do get our annual, not annual, periodic public works report. Very helpful what they're doing. We should have plugged that in when Dave was here, but seems pretty standard. Keeping everything going. Okay. Further old business? Anyone online? New business? And hearing none, I will ask for public forum on any topic. Thanks for sticking around.
I enjoy myself. Thank you. Lauren Trudy from 99 North Street. I saw in the local paper that the Board of Selectmen plans on putting parking spaces at 52 Church Street to supplement the parking at Park and Recreation next door. I strongly disagree with this. The last thing we need is more parking spaces for amongst many other reasons, but most importantly, it is not environmentally friendly. We only want to save the planet when it does not inconvenience us, and this proposed additional parking is a perfect example of this. There is plenty of parking nearby at the Green Town Hall and St. George's Church, which I'm sure a deal could be worked out between St. George's and the town where the public could park there. This is a simple case of being lazy where, God forbid, we can't park feet from the front door. We need to stop accommodating the automobile. That is a big reason we are presently facing serious environmental problems. And please no senior citizen excuse for additional parking as we all need to sacrifice for the benefit of future generations. I end with one simple question. Would the town and its residents, the environment and the future generations be better off now and in the future with using 52 Church Street as a pollinator garden or parking spaces and a storage building? So if you could please revisit that and take a look at that. And I'll end this with, and I mean this sincerely, I live in a beautiful town and you're a big part of that, and I thank you for that and I appreciate that. Okay, thank you for your time.
May I just ask you one question?
Sure, ask me if you want.
You're a current member of the Park and Rec Commission.
Yeah, but I'm not, I am not representing the Park and Rec. I'm just.
I just want to make that clear, that you're speaking as an individual, not as a.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Member of that commission, because I believe the majority of the commission support the parking.
Yeah, yeah, so at my behalf, we took a vote, I'm guessing, three years ago, and everybody voted yes for the, at the supporting initial, pardon me, I was the only one that voted no. But we've had, I'm guessing, four new members.
Okay.
From that vote three years ago, and I'm just guessing on that.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
If you have any other questions, I got all day.
I don't have a question, but just a thought, and there's been a lot of, obviously, a lot of energy going into that parcel already, and there's been a lot of recent activity.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of bring it up to speed. So much of what you say is provocative and interesting, right?
Yeah.
People need to walk more, people need to bicycle more. I mean, it occurs to me, you know, there was taken input that some bicycle parking is not a bad idea, regardless of what else happens. There are some gardening spaces, not a bad idea to, you know, just those single paved, I don't think anybody's really looking for a runway back there necessarily. Impervious surface is.
Yeah, yeah.
More problematic than maybe some different surface. Then maybe there's a bunch of ways of addressing what your concerns are without completely cutting off the possibility of additional parking, which feels urgent to me every time I go to the community center where there's multiple activities. That spot is burdened.
I, I am not denying that. But like I said before, the problem is, is that, you know, like the town engineer said, like just a perfect example, the reason the sidewalk is out that it was, it was made for cars and not made for people. Well, we got to start changing our ways, like, and guess, we're all, I'm a hypocrite like everybody else. I'm, you know what I mean? I drive a car, I got on a plane and all that kind of stuff. I'm a hypocrite like everybody else, but, I mean, people just got to, just park your car here or park your car over there. I mean, that space, there's a beautiful piece of property and we're going to put parking spaces there? I don't care whether there's 10 spaces or three spaces. We should take that property and make it a pollinator garden or something. Let's not put more parking space. We've been doing this for two, you know, like 100 years and it's killing us. I mean, we got to be able, if you can't walk from here to there, it's two blocks. And let's face it, people in the city are in a lot better shape than we are because they walk everywhere.
Yeah.
Again, I'm guilty of this too. You know, we all do, but please, for future generations, we need to change our ways. I mean, come on, more parking? I mean, and the thing is too, is like, that's an eyesore there now. I mean, do you want your neighbors, and Lou, you live across the street. I mean, let's face it, where I live, do you want your neighbors parking your car, their car in the front yard? No, well, we do it, every time I go by here, there's cars, it's, it's an eyesore. And then we have a meeting and people are parked all over the parking rec on the grass. I mean, tow the cars. I mean, it's like, it's ridiculous because people are too darn lazy to walk two, they can't, you can't walk two blocks. Come on, I beg you, rethink it. Let's do the right thing. I don't, not two spaces, not three spaces, just leave it open space. I mean, I will put you on a spot. Do you want to park right here or do you want to park across the street? I mean, for selfish reasons, you know what I mean? It's like, I get it. And I hear, so I'm a senior citizen, right? But come on, we got to start sacrificing for our kids, our future generation. We can't just keep putting parking, please, 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 I mean, think about it. All right?
Appreciate it. Very good.
I appreciate you listening.
I don't know if you've had, and not to go on too far on this, I don't know if you've had a chance to see what they're doing on State Street in New Haven. But they produced all the lanes from two to one in each direction, created these incredibly wide bicycle lanes, dedicated bicycle lanes, curbed off with double wide walkways. It's, it's what, a lot of what you're talking about. And I think those changes are starting to develop in place.
Yeah, I, I, I know that.
Balance those needs.
Yeah, I'm the first to admit, there's probably not enough parking there. But we're not making the, we're not making the environment, our future generations, better by putting more parking. It's the same old story. You have, you know, I-95, whatever, you have two lanes of traffic. Well, let's put four lanes of traffic. And what happens? Those four lanes of traffic get filled up. We're still got a traffic amp. I feel very strongly about that and I just think, I just hope you revisit that. I mean, just look at it, it's a pollinator garden, it's a garden, but parking? I don't want to see like, well, we're going to only put 20 spaces there, we're going to make this, no. Don't put any parking there, please, 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 all right?
Thanks for coming in.
No, I appreciate you listening to me and again, I appreciate, I live in, lucky to live in this town and I'm not going to smoke up your rear end. You're a big part of that and I thank you for that. Thanks.
Thanks so much. Bye-bye. Anybody else online? Any other comments? Room is cleared out. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion second.
All in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you, everybody. End is concluded.